I'll go ahead and call the regular council meeting for August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four to order. Everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilperson Schomburg.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll take roll. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemper? Councilperson Ginever? Councilperson Friedmeyer? Councilperson Fisher? Councilperson Schomburg? Councilperson Winkelman? Councilperson Massa? I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the council meeting for August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, has the agenda been posted, dated, and signed? Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. If you have a moment to look at them.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from July twenty-second.
Second.
Alright. I have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Public comment, no one signed up? Check register and bills. Give you a moment to look at them. Uh, if you look at the use tax, you'll notice that it's down from last year at the same month, but well above last year as a whole, thirty thousand above last year as a whole. And I believe Jason, we budget three a year for the use tax, so we're, we're still above that. So, we're doing pretty good on that. All revenue is up on any of the tax forms, so.
But we're down like two months in a row on the use tax, which I thought was kinda odd. But sales tax is way up compared to last year's.
That's correct.
I don't know. It's kinda odd.
Yeah, I looked at those, but last year they were still getting that formula right. Some months we'd get like ten thousand and then we'd have forty-five and so. Yeah, we're, we're doing pretty good on that. I just wanted to show you on that one, it was, it was showing down a little bit, but it's overall, we're up and good.
I'll make a motion to approve the check register bills, financial report, and state of factory.
I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to the committee reports. Mr. Turner, you have anything to add to your report?
They still want to start Airport Road tomorrow, so unless I hear other ones.
Reclamation on Airport Road? Okay. Perfect. Chief Bova? Thank you, sir. Thanks for being here. Uh, Mr. Sullivan, building commissioner. Alright. Chief Helms? You have the floor, sir.
Once again, here briefly, we will. Once again, roll briefly, because there was a lot of business going on tonight. We are going to continue the Know Your Patrol. They don't like coming forward. They don't ever do that. They don't like coming forward. If you wanna, come on up here, come on up here. So, Know Your Patrol also includes dispatchers, but randomly, I'm just bringing two, three, four. We're gonna get to the police department, which is about twenty-three now, twenty-three. And we started this just to kinda recognize so you guys can put faces with who's working here and vice versa. So, tonight I brought, uh, police dispatcher Kathy Forster before you tonight. So what I did is I initially gave them a little something to fill out besides just made a lightning round. And I have a couple things that they gave me feedback of, so you know a little bit about them. So, Kathy was hired here in May twenty-twenty-one, is a resident of rural Festus. Kathy is married with two adult children. She spent ten years plus, or she had ten years plus police dispatching experience prior to us pulling her away and her coming to us, so we're happy about that. Kathy attended Three Rivers College and Metro Business College. And I asked them what's her reason for choosing Crystal City, and she said she had friends here. That's why I brought her. Uh, one thing she would change about the police department, that's a dangerous thing for the chief to ask, right? But I did ask it. One thing she would change about the police department, uh, she liked to have a kitchen with a stove and an oven. We don't have a, we don't have a kitchen really, much of a kitchen in the police department, so we struggle in that area a little bit. What she'd do for fun, she said she travels. I know they like to go west quite a bit, and she has a Jeep, so I think enough's said on that. And I put that Kathy does an outstanding job and always ready and willing to come to work. She's just an employee that shows up, does what she needs to do, and goes home, and I appreciate that. Next is dispatcher Christina Long. She was hired here in twenty-seventeen. She's a resident of De Soto. She has three children, and she has an associate's degree. Reason for choosing Crystal City, this is a really good answer, I put an exclamation point behind it, was they were hiring. So I thought that was good. One thing she would change about the department is she would have a kitchen. She says it's, at times it's hard to get food such as on night shift and during inclement weather. Also, officers and dispatchers could save money by not eating out as much. So we've talked about that kitchen, and I haven't got that done yet, but it's still kind of a joke between us. Uh, for fun, Christina likes to hunt and target shoot. And I put a note here, yes, Kenny Bradley, we do exchange some deer stories back and forth. And, um, I put Christina does an outstanding job. She just is the type of person that just gets the job done. We converse daily, but they're just people I can just depend on to show up to work. They take care of police officers, they take care of city business, and I'm real proud of them. Next is off, Officer Anthony Sodding. He was hired in December of twenty-twenty-one. Anthony is a resident of Festus, but I did put a note, he's just across the Crystal City line, I mean by that much. Anthony has two children and is engaged to the daughter of a lifelong law enforcement officer as we speak. And I put a note, the father-in-law of who he is engaged to is somebody that I was fortunate enough to work majority of my career with, and he's one of the best police officers, detectives that I ever worked with, truthfully. Um, Anthony has an associate's degree. Reason for choosing Crystal City, he grew up in the area and the department had a reputation of proactive officers. One thing he would change about the department is the opportunity for growth in special assignments. So I took him up on that a little bit. Anthony is on, um, I can disclose that, correct? You sure? Okay. Anthony is on the Jefferson County SWAT team. Um, in less than one year, I looked today, he, he gives a captain I feedback, written feedback every time he goes out on a special assignment, we call them call-outs, but I have at least fifteen that he's been called out on in less than one year of service. He's highly trained and skilled and routinely handles many dangerous situations. Typically, the things that he's called out for within Jefferson County to include all municipalities are high-level things. So he's getting a lot of good training. He, uh, just took the lead on running the majority, if not all, of our officers through, um, active shooter-type training within our school system the other night. So, uh, he's really stepping up to the plate and trying to make himself and others better. For fun, he spends time with his family. He hunts and fishes and hits the gym. And then final, I just put he is a great officer and continually working to make himself better and the department better. He gets his job done without hesitation. There's no hole in his hand. When he shows up at work, he comes in, he works, and he's really good at getting bad guys and gals. So I appreciate that. Lastly, we have Dalton Mesmer. Dalton was hired in May of twenty-two with, uh, five years plus, uh, police experience. Dalton is a resident of Crystal City. Dalton is married and has four children. Dalton has an associate's degree. Reason for choosing Crystal City, he wanted to work in the community he grew up in. Dalton is an evidence officer with the department also. Uh, this is a very important role. I handled that for about ten years and maybe one of the biggest pains in policing there is. So it's an important role and it takes a lot, it takes a lot of time and attention. He's been a leader in improving evidence operations, uh, kinda moving us forward in some areas. He does an outstanding job in this role. One thing he would change about the department, um, is more opportunity for growth. For fun, he's involved with kids, his kids, sports activities, and lifts weights. Dalton is a great officer. He also gets his job done without hesitation. Dalton is kind of a low-keyed personality a little bit, I would say, but he just, he just gets here and does what needs to be done and does it the right way and then goes home. That's about all I can ask as chief of police. So I appreciate them. I put him bold at the bottom. I always ask, you know, what made you wanna be a police officer? And they were so similar, I just put, both stated their favorite thing about being a police officer is being able to help people and to have a positive impact on the community. They like being able to work both individually and as a team. So this is four more, and I'll just keep bringing them, but I appreciate them. I appreciate what they do and the service they give to this community.
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing them up. Thank you very much. Alright. Thank you, chief. We'll go ahead and go to council liaison reports. Mr. Fisher, library school board?
Uh, there's not much going on this week. Last week, the library had an open house and a back-to-school event and scavenger hunt. So, uh, our library, if you don't check it out very often, you should, they do a lot of good things.
Good deal. Ms. Schomburg, park board? Thank you. Ms. Friedmeyer, planning and zoning?
September the fifth, we have a meeting at six-thirty coming up.
Alright. Zoning appeals, Mr. Ginever?
There is no activity this month.
Thank you. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on anything related to the previous council meeting? No? Moving on. Old business we have none, new business we have none. Let's move on to ordinances and resolutions.
Alright, I'll make a motion to read bill nineteen fifty-six dash twenty twenty-four on its first reading.
Yes. I have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of bill nineteen fifty-six dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please? Thank you, ma'am. I'll need them.
Make a motion to accept bill nineteen fifty-six dash twenty twenty-four on its first reading.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept bill nineteen fifty-six dash twenty twenty-four on its first reading by title only. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I'm sorry, mayor, I have had quite, a quick question.
Yeah.
Is there currently a, an ordinance regarding camping on public property? There is not, okay.
Alright. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Make a motion to read bill nineteen fifty-six dash twenty twenty-four on second and final reading by title only.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of bill nineteen fifty-six dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please? Thank you, ma'am.
Make a motion to accept bill nineteen fifty-six dash twenty twenty-four on second and final reading by title only.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve bill nineteen fifty-six dash twenty twenty-four on its second and final reading by title only. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemper? Councilperson Ginever? Councilperson Friedmeyer? Councilperson Fisher? Councilperson Schomburg? Councilperson Winkelman? Bill number nineteen fifty-six twenty twenty-four now becomes ordinance nineteen fifty-six twenty twenty-four, is that correct, madam clerk? Thank you, ma'am. I have a motion and second. Any discussion on that bill? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of bill nineteen fifty-seven dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please? Thank you, ma'am. A motion has been made and seconded to accept bill nineteen fifty-seven dash twenty twenty-four on its first reading by title only. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of bill nineteen fifty-seven dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please? Thank you, ma'am. A motion has been made and seconded to approve bill nineteen fifty-seven dash twenty twenty-four on its second and final reading by title only. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I will poll the council. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemper? Councilperson Ginever? Councilperson Friedmeyer? Councilperson Fisher? Councilperson Schomburg? Councilperson Winkelman? Bill number nineteen fifty-seven dash twenty twenty-four now becomes ordinance nineteen fifty-seven dash twenty twenty-four, is that correct, madam clerk? Thank you, ma'am. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of bill nineteen fifty-eight dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please? A motion has been made and seconded to accept bill nineteen fifty-eight dash twenty twenty-four on its first reading by title only. Any discussion?
I did want to, and so currently, this new document is replacing an existing document? Is that something that we've had, or is this? Okay, so this? Okay.
Those are things done that I may not have, so this, yeah, and what we budgeted for this year is a whole ID security platform.
Right.
Unless this will get cyber insurance, this policy has to be enacted and adopted, and everybody sign off on it before the, uh, we're able to get insurance. So you'll see other things coming along with this, and we do, two factor of certification, we get into your emails coming, things of that nature, coming up more.
And the document that's created, was created by you with?
Forward slash.
Forward slash.
Um, we'll also switch to a dot gov domain.
Mm-hmm.
Or, 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 so it'll be a dot gov domain. Uh, so it's just all part of a more security, uh, security structure, I guess.
How many employees do we have with an ID that require security?
Uh, well, everybody here, I would say.
Everybody in Shelley's department, right? Is that, is that what it is? Is the number of people with email addresses, okay? Okay.
Includes all of you guys. Most of everybody should have to do the test they sent you.
Right.
So there'll be a spam campaign, a phishing campaign, clicking on, stuff.
If people are not familiar with a phishing campaign, they send stuff out, you better look at it. Also, if you get to go back and review the videos.
I'll be there every month, uh, you know. It probably will be the first time that I have, let's just say, an employee that re, continually clicks on spam emails or phishing emails, pop three or four monthly, they, they have problems.
And Jason will be the information security officer?
So will the council members get, get a copy of this and also be required to acknowledge that we received it? Okay.
It's pretty thorough. If you run through it, it's.
It's fifty-nine pages.
Yeah. It's, it's quite a bit. Yeah. We absolutely do. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Yeah. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of bill nineteen fifty-eight dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please? Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve bill nineteen fifty-eight dash twenty twenty-four on its second and final reading by title only. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemper? Councilperson Ginever? Councilperson Friedmeyer? Councilperson Fisher? Councilperson Schomburg? Councilperson Winkelman? Thank you. Bill number nineteen fifty-eight dash twenty twenty-four now becomes ordinance nineteen fifty-eight twenty twenty-four, is that correct, madam clerk? Alright. I'll entertain a motion to table bill nineteen fifty-nine.
Are we, we gonna open it for discussion, though? Before we table it? Cause I've got, I've got a couple of questions about it.
We got Brandon here. I mean, I don't mind opening it up for discussion. Brandon, nineteen fifty? Yeah.
Well, no, I, I just got one, and I was kinda surprised by one of the, uh, sections in it. You said most of this is based on Missouri statutes? All of it's? Oh, okay. Oh, new, new constitutional regulations? When we legalized, uh, recreational marijuana? Uh, so it's unlawful to possess drug paraphernalia of any sort? Like if I carried a pipe and somebody could arrest me, is it? Well, no, it's saying that it is. Okay, so whether it has to have residue in it or something like that?
The controlled substance list is listed in chapter one ninety-five, five seventy-nine of Missouri code.
Okay.
If it is considered a controlled substance under Missouri law in violation of what that controlled substance is, first quantity and amount, yes, it would be considered a violation.
Yeah, this is section thirty-four dash two forty-two. Yeah, a person commits the offense of unlawful possession of drug paraphernalia if he's, or she knowingly uses or possesses with intent to use drug paraphernalia. But how do you use drug paraphernalia to plant, propagate, cultivate, grow, harvest? It just seems, are these, this is all words from Missouri statute?
We didn't make it up.
Seriously?
It's fine, it's fine, it's like you with this, I mean, I can send you where specifically in the constitutional regulations it, it, that's fine.
Okay, no, that's fine. I, I believe you, I just, I was kinda surprised.
It was crafted throughout the entire MMA, municipal Missouri attorney association, its statutory language that was created with Missouri constitution. So, yeah, I, I didn't point you to those specifically as to what that was passed and how it was.
Okay.
It's an intense base ordinance, so how you going to practically enforce that, it would be extremely difficult to do so.
Okay.
If you just have it on your person and there's no intent to use it in violation of the controlled substance statute, it's, it's a hairy thing for the officers to even try and.
That's kinda, kinda where I was coming from. I don't know how they can enforce or?
That's why I think putting this against on it for now, so practically we can determine what this language actually means for our officers on street as far as enforcement goes. Plus, you're much public to be able to understand what's legal and what's not as well, so.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so that's, well, definitely highlight that one and make sure that what we're doing in this ordinance practically matches those what, uh, Chief Helm is doing for his officers as well.
I think it's a good idea. We table this for a while and read through it again and just bounce it off. Right. I mean, there's just a lot to unpack, and some of it kinda contradicts itself, so.
I think the rest of it is pretty close to what I, my understanding of it was, too. Like you, you can't really grow your own, um, I think you're allowed if you got a permit now. I think that's what it is. Yeah, in certain quantities.
In a certain room and have catalog associated with it, it has to be non-sociable from a public street, so. I mean, there's still some regulations associated with it.
Right, right.
That's all the intention this was, it was not the intent to go beyond what was passed.
Right, right. Okay. That's all.
I'll take a look at that, though, and we're gonna sit down with the meeting board, the prosecutor, the police officers, and just make sure this matches with what their understanding is and practically how to enforce it.
Oops, sorry. I need a motion to table bill nineteen fifty-nine. Alright. I have a motion to table bill nineteen fifty-nine. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Oh, I got one more thing, real quick. Is, is this a predecessor to us updating our substance abuse policies within the city as well?
Uh, we'll do that at, um, when we do the, like, time of May.
Okay, around April or so.
There's a couple of things we're working on, but this has just been in the hopper for a long time. Obviously, this is updated in passing point two, so.
Okay. Okay, sorry, Ken.
No, we're good, go ahead. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of bill nineteen sixty dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please? Thank you, ma'am. A motion has been made and seconded to accept bill nineteen sixty dash twenty twenty-four on its first reading by title only. Any discussion?
I do, uh, want to, now, when I abstain from voting, this is a company that's owned by my, uh, family member, so.
Okay.
Nephew and brother-in-law.
Alright. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? We have one abstain. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of bill nineteen sixty dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please?
Twenty twenty-four on its final reading by title only. In ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, amending ordinance nineteen fifty-three dash twenty twenty-four with Spencer Contracting Company and adding additional alley improvements as outlined in exhibit A for forty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve bill nineteen sixty dash twenty twenty-four on its second and final reading by title only. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Have a one abstain. I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemper? Councilperson Ginever? Councilperson Friedmeyer? Councilperson Fisher? Councilperson Schomburg? Councilperson Winkelman? Alright. Bill number nineteen sixty dash twenty twenty-four now becomes ordinance nineteen sixty dash twenty twenty-four, is that correct, madam clerk? Alrighty. That moves us on to the city administrators' report. I did have a few words for Mr. Eisenbeis when I read that first paragraph. Disheartening, but the record is I want to for the Twin City Days competition by me, so. Is what it is. We'll have that coming up. Uh, he had a thorough, thorough admin report. It was fun. I don't know. Do you, what is it? Do you, what is it?
Am I not supposed to tell?
No, you are, he told me, I think, I just.
Uh, you guys are gonna shoot targets with, uh, those pump guns?
Oh, I'm good with that. I would, I will have this on record, though, I have never participated in a mayor's challenge yet. It's been our street cruise, so, but I'm the one taking it, it's fine. I, I know, I know. So this year, it's actually a mayor's challenge, I will try my hardest, so. I, and, I get it.
Forty years, so it doesn't mean that much, we're talking about pumping golf balls.
All right. Moving on from this, anybody have a question for Mr. Eisenbeis?
Spencer Contracting, the paving, has that started yet? When is it going to start? We, I?
No, so they're running, uh, two to three weeks behind, uh, the wet July that we experienced, that's all our projects, about two to three weeks behind, including any land part. So, which is just fine, especially on the wet part, but, uh, they put it in a little better. We're able to go up, kind of around the Dogleg area, to go down the Lake Drive. We're milling it out ourselves and picking it, uh, our crews are, ahead of the paving project, that saved us forty thousand, forty seven thousand dollars to be able to do that, so. They were able to button up the Nineth and Taylor Stormwater project, that's done, which needs to be done ahead of this project, so everything's kind of following in line, it's just a little bit later in the season. Especially it's true for mid-September, um, tend to believe they're looking at the sixteenth, but as weather, it rained last, or before last, I pushed them another week out, so, we'll see.
We have a lot of work in Crystal City right now, I mean, just.
It is a busy, busy morning. From six fifteen till about nine o'clock, I'm running everywhere from nine different jobs we got going on in town, it's, it's a good time.
It's a good.
It's good for you.
It is good for you.
And I will say, Mr. Turner, in the next one job, if you guys have been with me a year ago, I don't know what, I don't actually know, because he is, he is taking one of these projects, Robert, and Stormwater stuff, and they're, they're doing exactly what we promoted them to do, they're doing the next one for us.
Good, well, thank you. All right, does anybody else have anything else? All right, mayor's report, uh, I'll have a couple of things. Police presence on the first day of school was very good. Uh, we had a lot of, a lot of police officers in the building. Mr. Pruno already left, but, I mean, I saw everybody, so, we had a, a good showing, I really liked that. Twin City Days is coming up, I'm excited to have everyone in town again. Uh, I do want to thank Rick Fisher for the amount of work he does, and donate his time for all those people coming to the, uh, Cobblestone. You do a lot, and, uh, without you, that would look much different, because I have no idea how any of that works, and, and that guy over there doesn't either, he gets the food jobs, so, uh, uh, you know, it, it's kind of one of those things, I know you donate a lot of time, and we really appreciate that. Uh, does anyone in the audience have anything to speak about on pertaining to these ordinances that we did today? You got two minutes.
You can't do any of this on their, their, their own.
I would assume it's on their private property.
Well, it's, it's in the ordinance, too, I think it's pretty detailed.
Drugs, smoking, or consumption of marijuana, and not only public property, but in areas open to the general public as well.
Right.
Because you're on your private property, and so you're doing it on the sidewalk or the front yard or anything like that, so, um, the ordinance should address it, that's in section six point five of the proposed ordinance. Uh, it's, it's a pretty detailed ordinance, so if you have specific questions, I'm happy to take those. I, I just, I understand what you're saying, if I'm sitting on my back porch in the evening, and the wind blows a little bit, and my neighbor gets a wet blow, do I get a, do I get a ticket, or take a jet?
Well, you, ask, ask him for a foot, hey, you know our conversations, I need to know this, too.
Ken, I live on his daddy's end.
You got.
On my house.
All right, Mr. Fisher will.
My next door neighbor would care less, but, uh, for others, you know.
We will look into that, and we'll have, we'll, we'll have this, and that's one reason it's tabled, just to further get with our police officers and stuff, so thank you for that. Um, anybody else, anything with this meeting? If not, Ms. Schomburg, can you join me down at the front?
Uh, this is, this is Schomburg, Councilman Schomburg, I've known her for a long time, uh, probably have known a lot of you guys, but, uh, I felt overdid, and, uh, she presented her information, and, uh, one of those things is bittersweet, because what she does for the citizens, again, behind the scenes, she puts a lot of time in, and, uh, little things that go unnoticed by everybody, she does a lot, she puts a lot of time into it, where, when we were paving the roads, she was knocking on everybody's door, like, hey, move your car so that we can, so, little things like that, that, uh, she's been, she's been a rock for a long time, and, uh, she's a real good girl. She is a Crystal City girl, true and true, I must be moving away, but that is what it is, so, but, on behalf of Crystal City and all the councilmen, dear friends, dear Crystal City, you're vital to us, so, we appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. I learned a lot, and it's good. Uh, I'm still learning, I'm sure I'll continue to learn, but I'm definitely gonna, so, so, thank you.
All righty. Okay, uh, we're at roundtable comments. Councilperson Bradley?
Mary's been nice work, and we've been here for a while, I'm sure I'll see you around.
All righty. Councilperson Kimfer? Councilperson Ginever?
I'll say kind of the same thing, except to also mention that, you know, we don't do this for the money, and, uh, it does take a lot of time and effort, and I really appreciate that Mary's been on the council and de- dedicated her time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Friedmeyer?
Thank you, Mary, appreciate it. I've only been on council a short time, but I've worked with you for a lot of years here, so, thank you for all you do, and good luck.
Councilperson Fisher?
Uh, well, I don't want to shock any of the other council members, but Mary's my favorite.
Rightly so, rightly so. Councilperson Winkelman?
Mary knows. And I do want to, and on to another subject, and Jack asked about, and then go and help, uh, knowing that Crystal City got the leader newspaper last Thursday, apparently there was some delivery issue, so if you were looking for your leader in Crystal City, that's, they told me at the office when I went over and picked up a copy, they got lots of them over there. We missed them last week's leader from Crystal City, uh, or you can read it online like the mayor does, um, for some reason, post office didn't give it to, at, at address that Crystal City, or they told them to.
The leader comes out at Wednesday, like, around ten o'clock, eleven o'clock online, so that's why I do it, it's quick and easy, uh, and it's like, okay, I just need to damage control, see what we got, you know? Uh, last but not least, Councilperson Schomburg?
Um, Crystal City's still a great place to live, um, these council members work really hard, I know there's a lot of times when you don't, you don't see it, but they do a lot of behind-the-scenes things, and, um, it's just been a pleasure to work with everybody, it's, I feel like we have a really good group.
Well, thank you very much. We do have cake back there, we're gonna adjourn this meeting for about ten minutes, and then we have another closed following, so, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, adjourn, or, adj, I, it's, it's, we started early. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our regular council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, Mary.